We'll call the April Town Council meeting to order. And as soon as I have the agenda, I'll be happy to. No, we're not calling the council meeting in order. It's not an order. We're going to call the public hearing. This order, and this is not what I want either. So this is a public hearing on ordinance two thousand twenty-five dash oh one, which is an ordinance to require the registration of vacant properties and establish vacant property maintenance and security standards, amending Articles one and nine. Hopefully, anyone interested was able to look at it in the materials section. The councils looked at this a few times. And so the public hearing is open. Do you have anyone here who wishes to speak to this ordinance?
Marilyn trying to get into the meeting.
You need to raise your hand.
Yep, okay.
Okay. We did get a separate comment from Paula. I don't know if she's on. Which we'll handle. We had that comment in the document. Okay, there's no one here to speak on the ordinance.
I raised my hand.
Sorry?
I raised my hand. Sorry, it's Liz.
Well, I guess that means you can speak.
Thank you. I just, I meant to write something in support, and I'm not sure if I did, but I just wanted to say that I do wholehearted support of this without any concerns. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, did I miss any other hands?
No, but Marilyn's in the waiting room.
Sorry?
Marilyn's in the waiting room.
Oh, thank you. You're gonna have to help me out because I'm not controlling that, but I have it here. Okay, well, then we'll call the public hearing for real to a close. And we'll move on to a meeting in the town council.
That's good.
Before I start, well, that's the call to order. Before I start, I thought our town's meeting that they certainly should mention that Joan Mahaffey passed away last week, a very sad event and a kind of a surprise. And it was, it was quick, quick relatively, I think, for some of us. She was a lovely woman with the strong Mccatharine spirit. She charmed many of us over the years, earning respect for her caring nature and active involvement in making Washington Grove a better place for all of us. I think I can speak for myself, and the council shall be very much missed, and her memory will be honored. Maybe I'll allow the council, if anyone wants to make a statement, there is a there will be a event here at the home.
The twenty-sixth.
On the twenty-sixth, that's good.
The ten, I think.
Okay, sad, sad event. All right, so that will take us then.
Okay, just one thing, John. That did come up at the Gateway Committee. There's a between Shady Grove Crossing and Washington Grove, there's a little pathway, and Joan's, I always get confused, I think it's her niece, designed a welcome sign that says Washington Grove this way, Shady Grove Crossing this way. It's a really nice groovy thing, which we procrastinated on building forever. And we were talking about, and Joan has mentioned this many, many times. And so at the Gateway Committee, we were saying how it would be a nice tribute to her to put a, I think George Jet came up, maybe putting a bench there, putting up the sign, and maybe having a dedication to her there because, you know, that, because she's famous also for picking up the trash, and we don't have to dedicate that to her. So this would, I think this would be something that would be nice. So we're gonna probably propose that at our next meeting.
Great. Yes. Okay, so then we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Pretty full agenda, as you all know. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move second.
Any comments, additions concerning the agenda? A case or none?
If there's time, could, we've been talking a lot about possibly playing kiosks around. If there's time, can we put that in there, or you want to just wait?
But I don't think the proposal has materialized.
No, I thought we'd have it, I would like to introduce it to what we want to do, or you want to just wait?
I think, because we're gonna be discussing that on Wednesday at the rec meeting, and we can come up with a proposal to bring to council, so I think that's.
Okay.
It makes more sense to have something more substantive.
Yeah, I just, I know there's a lot of discussion, and there's various ideas, but once it's flushed out, then of course, we want to do it. Okay. All right, any other comments, then? All in favor of approval of the agenda? Okay, agenda's approved. Hi, Chris, I didn't see. Snuck in while I was at Lucian's. Okay, so we're on to public, sorry, sorry, the approval of the minutes of three-ten. Hopefully, the council had a chance to take a look at that. Any motion to approve the minutes? Thank you, Peter. Okay, Mary seconded. Thank you. Any comments or corrections about the minutes from March ten?
Nope.
Great, okay, hearing done, and all in favor of approving the minutes? Okay, thank you, that was unanimous. We can move on to public appearances. This is public appearances on any subject, including all of those that are on the agenda, so. Feel free, do we have any public appearances? All right, seeing none, we will then move on to the treasurer's report there, and as usual, I will attempt to put the treasurer's report on there. Somewhere I have the treasurer's report. You'd think I would, but. Can I please get this?
Shall we start anyway, or?
Yes, by all means.
Okay. Within income, we are starting to see the public utility property tax come in. It historically comes in the second half of our fiscal year, so I was happy to see some of it starting to come in. In terms of the contributions, I've given the information needed if for Joe Mahaffey, if folks want to do a donation, I've provided the information for using the Zelle to facilitate that, and nothing really new to report on the stump. That's pretty hell, pretty much held. In expenses, we're pretty much on track with most things. I've put in comments where needed. There's really nothing new from last month. So I'm here, if anybody has particular questions on any line item. Yeah, there's really not much new from last month.
A bit of a bottom line.
Yeah, and the bank balances are at the bottom, and then I've started putting in the the new funds that we've been, that we have are at the bottom below the bank balances, John. Yeah. So that stump carving is up to forty-six fifty, which would be matched dollar for dollar by the town up to the town doing five thousand, so. I know Tom's been in communication with the carver, and that will happen in the summer, but in next fiscal year. That's a report.
Any questions from the council? Okay, I need a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
I'll move.
Ava has moved.
Second.
Barbara has seconded. All in favor? Okay. Here's the support accepted. I also have on here kind of a review of the timeline for preparing and adopting the budget. There's not a lot to say. Today, we're going to hopefully approve the the budget that will go to the meeting on May tenth. I need to send out a notice of that. We have to get it out early enough. And there's some other, a few other things, but we certainly, I think, hopefully, everyone who had anything to say about the line items will have contacted one of you or someone. All right, moving on to my report. I have one kudo, and that's to Steve Wertz. This has come via Peter. Steve gets a lot of kudos. Remember, he's no longer an employee.
Yeah, that's right.
Which means all of these, his skills and efforts deserve recognition as a resident. And this time, it involves the vinyl sleeves that innovation to use for removable signs in the lockways, and so far, those sleeves appear to be holding the signs more vertical. And hopefully, that will continue, which has always been kind of a thief of a lot of people. Because just in the ground, they, or a short sleeve, they tend to fall over, so. So all, all thanks to Steve, and as you saw, hopefully, in the council reports, and it's down there in my of note area. Peter and RJ have started a program on signs all over town, which means this is being implemented as well as a lot of other signage being closely examined and renovated or replaced.
If you have to go down the Colley, the Leaning Tower of Negan, is what I call it, twenty-two signs on it, has a sleeve, and it's straight.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the first time in maybe twenty years. That's, well, it's how long it lasts, but.
So what are you doing, going around with a level? And checking them?
Well, when the sign is like this, it's like pretty obvious. But almost all the sign, almost every post in town has been done again, and it's nice. For us that walk around and notice those things.
Okay, so then I have the top here about the town election. Of course, it's going to be in person on Saturday, May tenth, from four to seven. The absentee ballot applications are being accepted through May second. For those who want to vote early in one way or the other, that can be done by mail, or more simply by simply bringing the closed ballot here, but first you have to submit an application for the ballot. So the applications are being accepted through May second.
We're working on them tomorrow.
Okay.
He's coming over.
Good, because people will start.
Who has been nominated?
And that was my next. The nominations I know of are myself for mayor. Mary has been nominated for another term for council, and John Porter has been nominated for the other town council position. So unless there's one I don't.
What's the other town council?
Because I'm leaving council.
Oh, oh.
And Mary, yours term is up.
Yeah, her term was up, and Eva's term was up. But she's going back to be a mother.
Never left.
As if she never left, right? Now. Yeah, if, I guess this will leave as last full-fledged council meeting. So I'll say something again, probably at the, at the town meeting, but as you know, we struggle to find our newer residents. Read that also as younger residents to, to serve on the council, to bring in, you know, the point of view of a newer resident. Probably the average residence here, maybe in the thirty or twenty, high twenties, except for you. And so doing it while having kids, school-aged kids, and working and all of those things, you really, it's really been, I know a challenge, but terrific for the town.
Well, I might, I might come back to council at some point.
Wow, absolutely.
Let me get a little break.
The, you can follow in Charlie Charleston's footsteps. He's been, he's been on the council off and on for years as dragooned into the, into the position, so. Yeah, we may pick you up on that sooner. Right. Okay, so next item is, I just want to re-mention the zoning changes that the Planning Commission is is going to propose in some way or another for the commercial corner. That's, further movement on that is awaiting Sue Ellen Ferguson, our town attorney's consultation on how best to implement a, a change in the zoning. The reason for that is because we want to connect the zoning change to renovation of the property. And we'd like to connect the two pretty strongly, and how to do that, we need Sue Ellen's advice exactly on how to do that.
So she addressed this at all, or she hasn't?
I've let her know that we'd like to hear about it, but.
Yeah, she was into that, yeah. So this, so that's next on tap with her.
Yes, it's the only, only other thing on our plate, other than the ongoing lighting, Pepco, yes, go. If you don't, if, by the way, on that subject, if you don't already know, since a year and a half ago, she's been representing about eight municipalities, including Washington Grove, in the discussions with Pepco and also on the Public Service Committee. So we share the cost of her work on that, and it hasn't been owner, an owner of some act by any means, but, but we absolutely need someone with legal, legal weight to do that. Okay, the shared use pathway report is, unfortunately, there has been no real progress on the mandatory referral, which is next up on the formalities that, that the planning board has not been scheduled. Although it should be scheduled shortly, the reason that it was scheduled at one point, but then had to be canceled because the forest conservation portion of the plan had not been addressed to the forest conservation people's liking. But that hopefully will be done, and it will get, get moving. What happened?
Almost come to the waiting.
Sorry? Hey, now you can, can't do that on my laptop, I have to use. I'm supposed to be sharing the screen here, aren't I? No, I'm supposed to be looking at my agenda. Alrighty. The Arbor Day, Arbor Day is, and the Westwoods Cleanup will be on Sunday, April twenty-seventh. Wanted to announce that. And there are some other events coming up. There's always events. I just want to really mention some of our ma- major volunteer events, and that's one of them.
And that would be a good way to honor Joan, too, because she was such a good part of Woods Committee.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I do want to report on the apparent sort of a major development in, in, in the final final redevelopment of the county service parks around the Shady Grove Metro. For years, the problem, the remaining problem has been relocating the Montgomery County school system's buses. There, there's still, and there's about four hundred buses, they say. But the county executive has recently submitted a supplementary funding request of about ten million dollars that would fund the relocation of about two hundred and fifty to, of those buses to sites, one or more sites on Guti. So that still needs to be fully developed. The remaining buses, which is a subset, and it's a, it's a partial subset, may still be located near Crab's Branch, but as part of the redevelopment. There is a proposal to do that. But the ten million to get all that movement going may finally mean that that redevelopment would occur, which is only nearly twenty years since the original master plan in two thousand six.
And maybe I don't, I don't know anything about this, so what are they hoping to put where the buses are currently?
Oh, there's a residential.
More townhouses.
Residence, there's a park.
Oh, okay.
There, not a huge park. Originally, it was a school site. I know that it's still a school site as well.
Okay.
But, yeah, it was important to move that.
Yeah.
Those buses to reclaim that property.
And will that impact the road coming through, completing through Amity?
No.
That's not part of it? Oh, good.
Okay, and that's the end of my report. So we'll move on to the administrative matters. And the first one is the landscape and services contract. That has a surprising. We got three, we got three bids, and normally we would open them here in front of everybody because we're back in this room. But it's actually gonna be more, it seemed to me to be, we've got three bids, and we get more efficient to at least assemble the bids so we, the council could consider. And we have I have put together the three bids. The three bids were from RJ, a company called Greensweep. They include a lot of details about their their company, some details, and Green Earth, who has bid both previous times that we'll order the contract. So here you sit. And the, this, this, the RFP this time, as you will recall, requested bids for five years out. We'll only award the contract for the first year, but in awarding it to the, the, the winning, the bidder, we have the option of offering them a second year, a third year, a fourth year, this kind of fifth year at the, at the, at the price that they have specified for those years, or with negotiations. So just to summarize, I've got in green for the next year, which is the one we're actually awarding, of course. And you can see that Green Earth's bid is substantially the lowest.
How could RJ and Green Earth both be almost fifty percent when they're so much different per hour?
Because Green Earth has no idea what they're getting into. There's, there's, there's no way, there's no way that you know, it's, in the first year, Steve worked probably fifty percent of the time training all the people in RJ how to do this.
So, so the difference is they are projecting different amount of time to.
I have no, I don't know. I don't know.
Is that why they're different? They're both charging fifty dollars per hour, but one's sixty-five thousand, the other's thirty-five?
Yeah.
Well, the, wait a second, let me explain. The per hour, we, they, they were, each of the bidders was asked to provide an hourly charge for additional work. So as you know, we, the, the contract covers a, a set, a fixed set of, of work, of, of scope. And then we utilize someone, often this contractor, for all the one-offs and miscellaneous, and they usually bid those individually. I mean, when I say bid, they'll quote a price, do whatever the job is, and most of the time, it's, it's not the materials, it's the labor to do it.
So that's what it was.
This is the labor rate they would return. All right, well, Peter's made, made a statement. I did put a couple of things on here because it just seemed to me that, you know, we had to take seriously this, this low bid. And so what I did is I calculated the difference, which is here in green, which is thirty thousand, and then I took the hourly rate. I said, okay, supposing they under, as they, they somehow took, we're gonna do a lot more hours. The amount of, of hours at fifty dollars, fifty one, fifty dollars an hour is six hundred. Support six hundred hours of work, man-hours. I did the same thing for the other bidder, Greensweep. And they, they're also, as you can see, they're fifty-six versus sixty-five, and but their hourly rate was materially higher, so the difference, the nine thousand lower cost would support a hundred and ten hours at their rate of eighty-five.
Now, the Greensweep and the Green Earth, their names make me think that they're environmentally friendly in some way. Is there any difference in the, you know, equipment they're using or anything like that?
I didn't read thoroughly the Greensweep. I did read Green Earth, and there's a statement by Rob McLaren, who's the owner of the company. It's, I can show you what it says concerning that.
Isn't it mandated now?
Sorry?
Isn't it mandated now in terms?
Well, that's for the leaf blowers. There's still, you know, we still.
For the others.
All the other equipment. Yeah, so let me.
And Green Earth is the person who, they currently.
They currently do our leaves, that is correct.
So they're a little bit familiar with the Grove, at least.
They're very familiar with the Grove, I would have to say. Okay, open, thank you. Let's stop the share on that and show you what they said. Okay, excuse me, it will scroll weirdly. That's their bid for the five years. Included somewhere. You have to go down there. There you have it. Okay. They have some reference. Okay, well. I think we have.
Did any of the bids have, like, material deviations from the RFP specs?
In general, the, the bids don't make no alterations to the RFP. They, sometimes they include the RFP, but we only require them to submit the bidding sheet. And when we go to the contract, you know, the contract states, this is what you'll do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no, there were no, no caveats that I saw.
How long has RJ been doing the landscaping? Three years?
Three years. So is there an intent to have a presentation from the contractors prior to award? Well, there wasn't. So here, here's the deal. And here's, let's, let's be a little, little private.
Yes.
The, the reason we wanted to get the, to potentially make the award tonight was to include accurate numbers in the budget. In the budget for next year.
Mm-hmm.
So in the budget for next year, Jane's here, but I think we put sixty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Something we just sort of, and, and we were gonna insert the actual number if we awarded the contract tonight.
Mm-hmm.
So if we were to leave that number in, it basically is the high bid here. Um, and if we were to subsequently make the award before July first, which is when the contract starts. Um, it could only positive, in fact, impact the budget, so. One thing, one thing we can do is budget the way we have at the moment, which would cover the, the high bid.
Hmm.
And if we, council chooses to make award to a lower bidder. It will just reduce the, the cost in, in that way, and, and for that line, those line items that.
Yeah, the budget uses this year's numbers, it's actually like a hundred higher. Than what's on this big quote, so we can change it to the exact number in the. Quote, if you want to, or just leave it the way it is.
Do I have a question? Do we have recommendations, like, or have, have the recommendations been checked, or the references? For, um, Greensweep and Green Earth?
Um, no, um, well, well, Green Earth, we have familiarity with, of course.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Right, uh, um, I still have that, uh, you know. Oh, why I can't, this is not my computer, that's why. Um. Yeah, uh, I don't know who Green Earth provided as references. We obviously learned a reference from RJ, they've been doing work.
Right.
Uh, so Green Earth, uh, um. Provided, uh, four references, they are HOAs and a shopping center. Um. And, uh, I can do a quick look at Greensweep.
My main concern, huge difference there, just remembering when RJ first looked it up from Steve. It was a big learning curve in terms of figuring out the particulars about. Things we do in the Grove and looking at the RFP, we've added even more particular.
Yes.
Things that, that are gonna, you know, require more work, so I, I'd just be concerned. That, you know, they may not really understand the technical, or. You know, there would be a, a switch over a learning curve at the beginning for them to figure it out, maybe.
Right, and, and a lot of, a lot of, I mean, I spent my last thirty years of my life doing government contracting, contracting. And the low, you, the low bidder is always suspect. And there's, there's no, especially like, I've worked very, yeah, with the last year and a half, I've worked hand in hand with RJ. But Steve spent the year before that, he spent an entire year, sixty, you know, he's thirty-five thousand, that's thirty-five thousand, it sounds like a lot of money. But one employee with, with benefits and everything is gonna cost you a hundred thousand dollars, or whatever. So for the amount of service we get, and I know George, looking at Georgette, um, you know, I'm, she's. She uses them quite a bit with the trees and everything, and, you know, we have just a very, very positive experience there. Can-do attitude, they're also advisors, they give us a lot of advice on different things that we can do, so I'm, I'm a big fan. I'm actually, um, very surprised that. A thirty-five thousand dollars to me, understanding what the nature of the job is and what gets done, to me, sounds totally unrealistic and that they don't understand. The services that we want, you know, even like the lake itself is just like, just one example of something that's out of, you know, it's a little bit. Um, unusual, so, um, you know, for me, I think it's a no-brainer to, to go with, you know, to go with somebody we know. Somebody who's learned, and I know that Steve is not, if we, if we bring in a new company, Steve is not training, um, that company. And so there's gonna be a lot of Grove time spent, a lot of frustration, Kathy, I think already has probably a full plate. So, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a difficult decision personally, but, you know, we're a council.
But I, I guess my question is, and it sounds like, you know, we're trying to find a placeholder in the budget. Which we already have some monies allocated in there to, to move forward, but I mean, i- is there a degree of urgency? You know, I, I would like to see, because of the disparity between owners, right? And the fact that the, the green leaf folks are, is it green leaf? No, green.
Wait, green leaf, right?
Green Earth.
Oh, yeah.
Green, green. Uh, but, you know.
Yeah.
There, you would think that they would be somewhat familiar because they've done the leaf, but they're not familiar with the overall ground.
But to say, I'm sorry, yeah, but it's, I, I, that just drives me crazy when, when anybody says they're familiar because they picked up the leaves.
Well, no, but the.
No, but we, I mean, we're all thinking it though, but picking up the leaves is, it doesn't need to, it's not even one percent of what this is about. Yeah, it's like a no-brainer, they hire somebody who's getting paid minimum wage to drive a truck, look for piles of leaves, pick it up. That has nothing to do with what this contract, as far as maintenance, between the Grove.
But, but what, I, I guess my question is, is what would it hurt?
Mm-hmm.
If we put the numbers in there that we already have.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then have presentations.
What would you ask?
Yeah.
Well, I, you know, the expert's sitting right over there, right, and, and, and what we, what we expect. And, and I, I guess I'm kinda curious, and the, and the thing is too, we don't wanna, we don't wanna get what we pay for. And go with a low dollar bid, but.
That's such a substantial part of being in the Grove is the environment that we have.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's a big difference, but I would be really, um, feel very badly if we went through the lower bid and, and were. Ending up chasing, chasing after, and who's gonna chase after them to make sure that it's done correctly.
And I would just, just add one thing, which you, none of you probably know, is that. A lot, a significant amount of people in the Grove know Mark, they know, they know the workers personally. And, you know, which is not maybe the greatest thing in the world, but, but they know them and, uh, they, like, and the, and the owner of the company. You know, Jim loves Washington, he, you know, he's the owner, he's, he, he has a beautiful beach house, he doesn't have to work. And, you know, he should be retired, but he comes here all the time because he loves hanging out in the Grove, he loves, you know. This is like his second home in a way.
I know when the sustainability committee was trying to get leaves, they were, you know, they were happy to.
Mm-hmm.
And take the leaves, you know, that they were collecting and, and, I mean, they're very accommodating.
The communication, I, I think that's like a huge part of successful relationship, is obviously communication. And, yeah, I call, I call Jim at least two or three times a week, and he always picks up his phone. And he always, and he always gets right back to me, and the other advantage too is that, you know, Steve, um, you know, knows these people and will continue. Steve will continue the work gratis, um, advising them, because he's still advising them on how to, you know, do different stuff. So anyway, that's, you know, uh, it's, you know, if, if green leaf or green earth. If they could pro- provide the same service and communicate the same way, that's great. But thirty thousand dollars, um, is unrealistic, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's a lot of money for the service. I mean, I don't know what you all think, but I just thought that we were getting a really good deal.
And we budgeted for it already, it's not like it's over budget, it's we budgeted for the amount.
I could be remembering this wrong, but didn't we put something in the RFP about environment, like when possible, using environmentally friendly? Equipment, so isn't that in the RFP already? Cause I guess that's my only thing, is I'm like.
Yeah.
You know, thinking about, well, would there be environmental advantage to one of these companies? But I think, did we put something on the RFP?
Yes, it's, it's.
Okay.
It's, uh, uh, that's why, but that's what they're responding to.
Okay, so, so then, so, okay.
And they're, they're already, they already, I know, are, are getting the, the, um, battery, solar battery-powered blowers. The cutting lawns, um, with a battery-powered.
Okay.
Lawn mowers is not feasible yet.
But, it's, yeah, and it's not required.
But if we, if we ask them, whatever we ask them to do, they really, I think John would agree, they, they pretty much bend over backwards trying to do it.
Yeah, okay, that was my only question.
I, I, you know, I, I'm a little bit within, with Chris's. Um, thought, um, I, I'll just throw one more thing out. Uh, I mean, it's be- because the difference in, uh, in, in bid is so large. It, as Peter says, it's seen, it's, it's, makes you a little bit, well, how much less service will you be getting? Or will we be getting the same, or, um, or what? Um, the thing about RJ is that, um, they do, they're jack-of-all-trades. I mean, Jim Quinn ensures that, and maybe part of that is having Steve, he's a jack-of-all-trades, but whatever, whatever reason. Um, it means almost any project that we, um, come up with, like.
Woodstone.
Yeah. Woodstone, or, or modifying the playground.
Yeah.
Uh, stuff, um, or fencing, or whatever it might be.
Mm-hmm.
That, uh, they're well capable of doing that, um, and easy, easy to work with. I don't wanna complicate anybody's lives, but as I say, it wouldn't hurt to, to kind of quiz. Green Earth on this, um, we, we can think of it this way, I mean, we. I was going to ask Jane, I was gonna ask you, but I forgot, as to how much additional, uh, contracting we did with RJ. Beyond, uh, you don't have to answer now, beyond, uh, beyond the contract, uh, all, all the additional work. Um, and the reason I put that calculation, that what, what the difference in hours would be is because. We do have, uh, uh, you know, we wanna feel comfortable, um, hiring. You know, contractors to do all that work, and if, if thirty thou- thirty-five thousand dollars bought us all of the standard. Landscaping, it would leave us that much more money to do these other projects. Um.
I can work on the calculation, it won't take me long.
Right, um.
Just keep talking.
And, you know, I think in the end, you know, Peter, Peter's expressing, you know. M- m- many of us just feel the same way, that, um, it's worth. It, it's hard to calculate the value of how we're, of having someone very responsive and, you know. Um, aware of when we need something done quickly and when we don't, and, and, you know, what sort of. What sort of work we expect, um, you know, uh, that's. And we don't have no guarantee that another contractor would, would respond that way.
Hmm.
Um, but you guys didn't see the bids, uh, Greensweep. It has some substantial, their references are substantial, they're not just a. They're not just another HOA company, um, so they also, um, um. The, the, the question is, can any of them provide the other services that we knew RJ could do even when we went going in? Um, because we'd used them previously, so, uh, I guess. I guess my recommendation is up to you guys would be not to award the contract. Leave the budget at, that would cover, cover the, the high bid contract. And, uh, spend a month or two, I mean, at least, as long as necessary, as long as we act before July first. Um, just to assure ourselves of what, what these bid, what these bidders are capable of.
I mean, if, if we bid, if we awarded on May nineteenth, is that enough time for them to?
Of course, contract starts July first, I, I mean, we have to sign the contract, but, you know.
Well, great, that, that's what I mean, is that enough time for us to negotiate and conclude the contract?
I don't think there's a whole lot of negotiating, it's.
Yeah.
We have a contract. Yeah, I, I, I mean, even if we did it on June, whatever date it is, we, we would have enough time, yeah.
So I think, you know, uh, uh, what I'm thinking is that, it, it's a very high probability, right? That, uh, that RJ would, would come out ahead, but.
You're doing your due diligence.
You know.
The issue are really responsible.
It's fair.
For the, for the stormwater. We don't, we don't wanna get yelled at by Rob again. The, the, the only quite concern that I, I have is. Um, if we go in a different, if we, if we stick with RJ. Um, I think it might be hard for us to get new companies to bid, I mean. Green Earth's gonna say, we underbid the incumbent by thirty grand, and we didn't get the contract, like this is.
Hmm.
This bidding process is.
Yeah, most of them.
A joke, yeah. Um, I, you know, putting aside like our duty as stewards of the public fisc. Uh, I mean, there's, there's countervailing cons- considerations, I mean, Peter's points are, are completely valid, and. I haven't heard any kind of, I, I, I think generally, the sentiments in town seem to be, people are. Are, are satisfied, if not happy, maybe, maybe happy with RJ's work. I certainly can't say like, there's dissatisfaction that I am aware of, I mean, like, so, um. Is it, would it be productive to, and, ask, um, RJ and Green Earth? To come to the next meeting and talk with us?
I think that's, I think that's what Chris wants.
Yeah.
That's exactly.
Well, yeah, I just, I'm not sure if I know what to ask them, I mean, other, other than like to say, are you for real, Green Earth? Now, but, but that may be, I mean, that, that's kind of what you need to do.
Reasonable question.
Yeah, I mean, that.
Yeah. Um.
Yeah, so I, I, I guess, I don't know, I, I'll second your motion, if your motion was to table the.
That table.
Post- postpone.
Mm-hmm. To, uh, to May nineteenth.
Mm-hmm.
We can always postpone until June, whatever.
And, and invite representatives to.
Right, thanks.
Yeah, all right, I second that.
Yeah, but we have to think about what are the questions we're gonna ask.
Yes.
So, well, you're probably in the best position to know that.
We need to see the RFPs.
I mean, presumably, they're saying that they will provide the services that are in the RFP, right?
Yeah.
So, I mean, what are you gonna say, are you?
Well, but no, no, how responsive they're going to be.
Hmm.
You know, do they, I mean, do you have people who can do fences?
Right.
Or stuff, not that we can't hire RJ to do all that anyway, we, that, that's, that, you know, we have funds. It's not this contract to do all that work, so, you know, to the extent. You know, they're willing to continue to work with the Grove, there's all those projects that we know will. We, we could treat, uh, you could treat the landscape contract as a landscape contract.
Wasn't there talk, weren't you talking about not having a separate maintenance?
Yeah, there was.
Um, I was, I was not.
That was handyman.
It's hard to find somebody who, uh.
That's a handyman.
Yeah, exactly.
That's something.
Paint, paint, paint the hall, right, right, Chris, that, you know, that sort of stuff.
Yeah, John, did you see in Green Earth's references whether they had, um, other municipalities that they're doing similar landscaping?
They don't.
They don't.
Now, uh, but Greensweep does.
Hmm.
They have Chevy Chase, that's their first, is it Chevy Chase? Yeah, it was June and.
Well, so, and because of all these questions that we have.
Yeah.
It would be good to just have people come in and press, you know, present their case.
Yeah.
And then from that, we could develop, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it gives us time to look at the bids.
Yeah.
Maybe reach out to talk with references and.
So Greensweep, I mean, I've just read Villlet, French of Heights, not, 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 yeah, French, Julian, I know Julian Mansfield, so. Uh, Metropolis Management can, a whole set of community services, Kettler Management. Uh, they, they have about six or seven, um, references, I, I think they're all management companies or something, um. But Green Earths are HOAs, and I don't know what they do for the HOA, whether they just to mow the grass.
Yeah, maybe they just pick up leaves.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, uh.
That's right.
I just wanted to say one other thing, because the, the gateway really likes. So their fencing and, you know, whatever, um, Audrey commented about, thank you. All right, so Audrey and, and I'll speak for Georgette, um, are both fans of RJ. The woods, I know Patty, if Patty was allowed to speak, um, just like looking at a job, they would wet stone and everything and working, you know. So, like, there's a lot of people within the town, volunteers. Who are very actively engaged with, uh, which we don't, you know, you don't, you don't see or hear about that. But when I chat with them, um, it's a lot of interaction, and I've never heard, I've never heard a negative thing. About these guys, and so anyway, but, but I totally agree, due diligence, um, it doesn't hurt. And I'd be fascinated to hear what Green Earth, you know, what the real story is, because I find it hard to believe. And how are they going to get up to speed, by the way, it's starting in the summer, the grass is growing already, so. You know, they've got, they've gotta like come right in and, um, now.
So it sounds like we have a plan of postponing this and asking.
Jane's hand, Jane's hand is raised.
So can we vote on that?
Okay, Jane?
I, just to let you know, we had budgeted thirty thousand in different contingency buckets. For odd job work for RJ, but so far, we've only spent just under four thousand. But so far, we've only spent just under four thousand. Right, you have, you have to remember, snow removal is a different budget. It's not.
Yeah, we're not talking about snow.
Yeah, yeah, that's all we've spent.
So. What?
So we have not. Historically, we barely tap. The contingency budget with RJ. And you can say, well, maybe we should be spending more and doing more projects. It's just not the way it's worked out.
His his pricing is ridiculous to do stuff. Like, he was gonna take up all the cement on Central Street. That walkway, at two thousand dollars. Whitestone Springs, you could, somebody would, contractor would come in. And charge you twenty-five, I can't believe the beautiful job they did. And what's that? It was like. Couple thousand dollars, right? Yeah, so because they're here and they like the Grove. I mean, and that's, this, this, there's so much value add that RJ brings to here. That, I mean, to me, it would be like a huge mistake going, but at the same time, I would really enjoy listening to this thirty thousand dollar proposal and seeing what they say.
So would we possibly get a list of the um, the the à la carte type work that RJ has done the past three years? Because it may be that they're they're, in effect, through the the flat price subsidizing. Other work that that i- if we were to go with Green Earth.
Hmm.
Then they're gonna charge a lot more for that work and it may not be that much of a price to.
Well, that's.
Several people nodding, thinking that may be right. I don't know, because I, but but those of you who've interacted with RJ. I mean, it sort of sounds like you 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 suspect that might be at least part of what's going on.
It's like when Steve was, Steve was an employee. Steve put a, just an example, the the fence around the tennis courts. Oh, that, that, that would cost fifty thousand dollars, maybe more, and he cut the materials. And, you know, he built the bridge to the lake, which which was an amazing.
Hmm, that was, yeah.
Yeah.
And and it costs us, I mean, basically, it costs us nothing.
Well, it costs us materials.
Which, well, yeah, which is, but what what would, they they charge twenty-five thousand dollars to put on a little deck these days. So, so if you look at what, you know, it always amazed me at how much value he brought to the Grove. Which people don't, John would know, the mayor, but the average person would have no idea, you know, the value.
So the, for example, the sign work, who's doing all that sign work?
Making it or doing it?
Doing, not making.
RJ, but Steve, I mean, Steve is going around with Jim, and I mean, the owner.
And they're paying.
Uh, no.
They're not paying?
Steve's making sure it's straight. They they have a, they do like a.
That's where. That, that's where the part is difficult to figure, because Steve is still.
Yeah.
Right.
But I'll give an example. We we need a, we 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 ask Steve when we do the stormwater work. But when the work starts, we need somebody who can answer all their questions, help out, where do I put all this stuff? Where you, you know, can I do this? Can I do that? Steve said, yeah, he would do that. And we were ready to, I mean, I'm ready to pay him. We have him on the, we have him as an employee. When I tried to get him, you know, I told him, you know, we were gonna do this, and he said, well. You can do that, but I'm probably not gonna charge you anything. I said, you are. And he says, well, I, if I wasn't doing. Agreeing to be responsible, I'd probably be down there anyway.
Yeah, right.
Just watching and kidding or whatever he would do.
Hmm.
So I I I mean, now we're here, he's doing that on other things, obviously. Um, so.
It's such, it's not, it's more important than actually the labor is is doing it the right. They go and they do, and that's what the other people do too. It's so frustrating to me because they'll, even like with signs, they'll put a sign, instead of four foot, it'll be six feet. But they put it too high, or they won't do it correctly, or whether, or they're just slow, you know?
Yeah.
Just Steve, you, yeah, whatever.
Okay, let's, we can, we can pursue uh. The elimination of what that bid means.
Hmm.
And we can hear from Jim as well. Um. Okay, I think we have a decision. Let's move on then to the next administrative matter, which we could um. Debar, and I called it dog business.
Oh.
Uh, at Peter's request, I stuck this here, this on here. Um, and I assumed that there was some specific proposal to be made.
Hmm.
Um, as to what to do. If there's not, I would recommend we defer it because we got a lot of other things to do.
Do a, do a, I would, I would just say, well, we can, we can do this just in five minutes, just so, just to let you know. That this winter's been, every winter, you see it, uh, forty percent of dog owners. I learned this today, do not pick up their dog poop. And John doesn't walk around the group, but you do, I do, I'm sure Eva, I know you do with your kids. And it is just, it's everywhere on the path, it's on the street, it's on the walkways. And I I go to the, I see the growth crossing, and I see they have those two poop stations there.
They have them in Amity as well.
Yeah, I mean, most, most communities have them, and I know it's like kind of giving in to these people who. You know, are disrespectful to us, but you know what? Every once a month, we all go pick up the trash. All the ways up to Mid County Highway, and it's the same thing where Pete, there's a certain amount of people that are gonna be doing that. And you can sit there and, you know, say, okay, well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, it's not my problem, it's not my fault. But it's still there, it it's disrespectful, it's unhealthy, it makes the town look bad, and it's really disgusting. Anyway. For um, Mary talked to the same company that does Shady Grove Crossing. And I was amazed at how economical it is. The four stations are like a twenty-five hundred dollar um. Two thousand dollar investment, which is per, that's one-time cost, and then it's like um, two thousand dollars a year.
They they pick up the, they empty the trash um, every two weeks and they replace the bags. You have to pay for the bags, but they. So they basically maintain them. And if the higher-end containers are enclosed, so there, some of them like have holes and then it smells, so they're. Because we walk in Amity all the time and you can walk by them and um, you don't smell anything, they're really pretty. Um.
So it's obnoxious for me and Mary to have to actually bring this up at the council meeting and argue about it. But I I was just really trying to figure out after the winter and the spring, what can we do? To uh, make this a little bit better. And this is what, this is a solution, you know, stop reinventing the wheel. This is what most communities have come up with, and I was thinking we could try it and.
And four would give us, allow, put one by the maintenance and then put them on either end and, you know, trying to think of a way that it's not right in front of somebody's house. So if you go to the end of Washington Grove Lane and put it across the street, it's still accessible for people who are walking. Walking through, but not really, you know, in anybody's, you know, anybody's way, or in the entrance to to the woods over here. I don't mind if they put it across the street.
Yeah, we're not saying put trash cans out in the park and other places, which people still ask, why don't we do that? We said, no, we're trash-free. This is really a different, and there's gonna be people that are gonna take multiple bags and things like that, but but the expense is pretty minimal. So, just think about what they.
Why is this year any different than any other year?
Uh, it's, it's always been, as, um, Steve, Steve finally gave up, uh, Steve, because Steve used to tell me stories all the time when he was cutting the lawn. And he would come home and he'd have feces on him, because it's just, it's all over the place, especially on the grass, where you can't like really see it that well.
So, why do we think if people don't care about picking up their dog now? Are they gonna say, oh, well, there's a little poop station, now I'm gonna pick up? Why?
Well, that's, it's not gonna be a hundred percent, but it's a reminder, and a lot of times, people just don't have bags.
They don't have the bags, and also, they don't want to carry the bags, so if you can have.
Drop bags all the time, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know. Not everybody's gonna use them, obviously, but I think, you know, it will make, may make a difference.
It's a, yeah, I don't want to champion this.
All right, so look, look, you've entered, you've had your five minutes. Um, I I think a specific proposal.
We'll put the proposal.
Could be made. I I can guarantee you there are are going to be feelings on either side here.
Hmm.
I I, my immediate reaction is, well, two weeks between pickups, that's.
No, it could be every week, it's just a little bit more money. Um, so we were saying, well, we try it for two-week sessions. And then if if that doesn't work, we can make it weekly.
It'll be good if they're filled, that means people's using them.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and 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 of course, the next thing is. How much of an impact would this have? We still have offensive.
Sure.
You know, could we, could we maybe possibly call flaws while we're thinking about this, maybe even talk to uh, the HOA president, Chris?
Light.
Light?
Yeah, yeah.
And see how it's been effective over there, and and I think it has been, but.
But they've never, they've always had it, so they would know the opposite, but.
Well, I mean, they would.
No, you're right, you see.
But they, but they think, yeah.
That's right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I don't know how many.
That'd be very helpful to do that.
Through Amity, I don't see that much on the ground, I honestly.
We we have a, we have a baseline.
Right.
They may, they may not have a baseline, we do. Um.
I'll be, I'll be dropping my poop in front of John's house next, next two weeks.
Uh, don't start that war.
Trash cans at the maintenance.
We were, we were, we were. We we had some offline discussion.
No.
I I suggested a a cheaper solution. Um, and that is that we offer a dog poop bounty. So we can pay by the pound or by the, by the bag. You deliver a bag, well. You you you'll get a bounty for doing that.
Some, some communities will DNA testing.
I mean, that's how you plan.
If you clean up your dog.
Yeah, that that's how you get rid of cans being dropped around. You put on a uh, a deposit and then people.
Who's gonna weigh it?
Collect it for the money. You know, it's a, it's been an effective approach. I'm, I'm really serious.
But you know, the nineteen sixties coke bomb, you know, the affluent, the affluent communities do DNA, seriously. They do, they, you know that.
So they can keynote this, yeah.
Yes, they do. They do DNA, and it's like a thousand dollar fine. If if they, if, if, yeah, they, they they find poop on the ground, they do, they check the DNA, and each dog has to register. Yes, I think we should put cameras.
I've never heard of it. Which, which, uh?
All right, all right, we're getting a far field. Let's go on, uh.
Wait, before you do, the trash cans, because you should all, people ask, those two trash cans at. The maintenance shed are not ours. They belong to the garbage service. They store them there and they bring them down the streets they can't access, like Oaks, uh, like um, uh, Johnson Alley. I didn't know, Steve explained this to me. So Johnson Alley and a few other, and I think on Oak. And then they they pick up all the trash and they put it back. So. When, so like, if people are putting their poop or trash and stuff in there. They're, they're coming and taking it away, and they're dealing with that, and they haven't mentioned anything. We, somebody um, put it um. Liz put, took them, took them and moved them a little behind the bamboo, so they weren't as visible. But we're not gonna put those, we can't put those in the maintenance shed. Yeah, and and there's no place else really for them to do it. So that was, that's the reason why they're out there.
Which goes to show that people are putting their poop in the trash cans at least.
Yeah, there you go. Some people, yeah. My trash can has lots of poop. Seriously, people, people know where the accessible cans are. All right. Was that five minutes?
All right, that was about, yeah, that was a throw five minutes.
Tell the John Compton part.
I won't take that. All right, we're going to move on to the uh, the annual uh, time meeting budget. So um, Jean is here. Um. I'm gonna put it up. Well, you can put, it doesn't matter, I'll put it up. Um, and then.
Yeah, I've got my my copy up that I can speak from, because I've highlighted the things that have.
Right.
Very few things that have changed since the council last saw.
Right.
And we finally got the correct number for the county municipal tax duplication. Uh, so we put that in. And if you go down to the detail. Pass the, that first page summary, John.
Uh, to what?
Just keep going. Yeah, so now we're in the detail. Um, if. Um, the summer in the parks, there was enough interest that the registration was reopened. And so Eva came up with a new budget, so uh, income. Uh, projected to increase because I know there's a lot more.
Yeah, it's great.
Yeah. And then when we get to the expense detail, we'll see uh, don't go, don't go there yet, John, don't. We'll get.
Don't go there.
Yeah, no, just let's finish it one line at a time. Anyway, um. So expenses did go up, but the town subsidies roughly the same as it was last month. When you last saw this, um. Down there, the use of or contribution to reserves, that number got adjusted just because income and expenses got adjusted. Now we can go into the detail of expenses. And again, I've highlighted in yellow that which has changed since the council last saw it. So we have to go down. Now I did, uh. When you stop there, John, the contract services. Um, that sixty-five, eight, thirty-two is. As you could see, that was the number we were using this year. Do you, and it's now sixty-five, five something? Do you want that to be changed? Just leave it like done?
I'd just leave it.
Thank you, saves me work. Um, and then we get down a little bit farther. Uh, when we get to recreation. So there's the change. Uh, we're gonna hire. Another um, counselor, because we'll have more kids. One more counselor, and then supplies, mostly the food budget. Um. It's popsicles and pizza on Fridays uh, went up. So that's the new numbers um, highlighted there. Like I said, the town subsidy basically didn't change, maybe by twenty dollars. Um, and that is it. Change, that's, those are the only changes um, since. Um. The council saw it last month.
I asked a question, Jean. Um, remind me where the amount is that's gonna work for the website to improve the website?
That's way up under the, what's called executive.
Executive.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's that twenty thousand. Um.
Oh, I see it now. Thank you. Okay, okay.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. I, Christine is finally eating into that fifteen hundred. She's got somebody she's trying out to do some basic cleanup and inventory. To be, prepare for the work that this twenty thousand would entail. So, um, that. The year-end projection is now not zero. That could be a change if if, if we want to do that.
Yeah, I definitely think you should put in much, you know, your spending.
But, yeah, I'll put that in on my copy. John, I'll get you a clean copy.
Okay.
Um, because it changes, um.
Bunch of numbers.
Bunch of numbers, it ripples through, yeah. Um. But that, that's really the only, uh, since you guys last. Saw this, the only changes.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? About the the budget? Um, I do wanna make sure and point out. I go back up here, that the use of um, reserves. Um, to balance the budget. Um, is a hundred and some other thousand dollars.
Forty-six, hundred and forty-six.
Right. It's here.
Mm-hmm.
There it is. Okay, um, last year, we, the budget as as. Uh, had seventy-one, so this is roughly twice that. Um, you'll note that because we underspent dramatically, the uh, there was, instead of a use of reserves, there was a two-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-dollar increase. In reserves. So even under worst-case scenario, this would simply be covered by the. Windfall, if you will, or the excess uh, revenue from the current fiscal year. That said, I don't recall ever seeing a a a year finish. Where the amount of reserves used approached the amount that was budgeted. It it almost never, as far as I know, it's never happened. Uh, how much you use, is used has changed, um. But, uh.
And this increase is really almost totally accounted for with the twenty thousand on the website. And fifty thousand that we have for um. Long overdue um, painting of the hall.
Yeah.
And and a few other items within the hall.
Hmm.
Um, just routine maintenance, but it's expensive.
Okay, so that, that was, just wanted to make everyone aware that is the case. Um, once again, the the other important. Um, once again, the, the other important feature here. And which is right here is that the, um, tax rate is calculated as constant yield. So there's no change in the yield, uh, per, um, hundred assessed valuation. That said. Um, so that will yield, um, about the same amount of money it, it yielded this year. Um. Jean, do you have any idea? I, I, I'd like to have for the town meeting to know the change in property.
Yeah, I, I get a letter from, um, the state. So yes, they tell me that. Assessed valuation numbers, they tell me, so I can look up last year's easily.
So if everybody's was the same as mine, for example. My, my assessed valuation will go up ten percent, which means my tax, property tax will go up ten percent. So that means if everybody else's goes up ten percent. The, the, uh, the, um. We, we will end up, un- unfortunately, since I doubt they've counted for that, raising more than this two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand.
Well, as you can see, we generally come in higher.
Yeah, exactly.
All of this is a crystal ball for the state.
Yeah. All right, and so that, and the dwelling, uh, the dwelling tax is calculated strictly on our, uh, refuse and recycling, so that's a known number and is, as you say, what it is.
And with the new houses being built on Ridge, we'll have to change that to twenty-five dwellings.
Yeah, creeping up.
Mm-hmm.
Um, okay, I think that's all I wanted to say about the, the budgets. Uh, so, um. The other thing we want to, we, 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 we need to approve, um, and it's, um. Was our capital improvement plan. There was no changes from what we did at the last meeting. I. Don't have a copy readily to put up, but if no, anybody has any reason to see it, I'll show it. Otherwise, it's where we left it. Um. Okay, uh, in that case, um. We need a motion to approve this budget for submitting to the budget, the financial plan and a capital improvement plan to the town meeting.
I will move.
Ava has moved to.
I'll second.
Who did? Uh, Mary has seconded. Any further discussion on that? All in favor? Unanimous? All right, we're set. By the way, this is modified with that number, but. Jean, you're gonna change, you're gonna put.
Well, the ordinance doesn't speak to year end.
No, I'm not talking about the ordinance. This is the budget that goes to the, we've only approved the budget going to the annual town meeting.
Yeah, I'll up.
We're going to the ordinance. Are, are we? I don't remember.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, that's the next thing. Um. Yeah. Uh. Okay, right. So the next thing is because we have to, uh, we have, uh, the, the state law requires us to, um, do. Uh, our rate by ordinance. Then, uh, we have an ordinance that needs to be introduced. Um. It is. Two thousand twenty-five dash oh-four, and, uh, it basically contains the summary. Poles, um, for each of the, um. For each of the categories, um, and the tax rates. So here's the, the tax rates are here. And here is the, the, uh, the dwelling tax. So what we do is introduce it today. And it has to be advertised in the usual way and the bulletin, et cetera, and then the May, at the May meeting. Which is the reason we have it, one of the reasons we have a May meeting as soon as we can, uh, is to create this ordinance. Okay, so. Somebody introduce this.
So I move to introduce it.
Thank you, Barbara moves to introduce the ordinance. Take a second, Mary has seconded. Uh, I assume there's no discussion. Um, we will, um, go through the advertising, um. Motions to a public hearing in May and, uh. I'll take care of it then. Okay, this, uh, well then move on to the next item, which is the vacant properties registry and maintenance standards. Um. Um. Ordinance and. I'm gonna turn the, as, as you know, we had that, the ordinance had been introduced. We've discussed it a few times. I don't believe we've amended it at all, but I'm gonna put it in Mary's hands, cause I think Mary has an amendment to, uh.
Do you have the, um?
Do.
Oh, good, okay.
Yeah, I'll put it up.
So these amendments include, um, all of Sue Ellen's, uh, recommendations in terms of, um, adding and changing the wording, um. She didn't really make any substantive change in any of the, anything that was in the ordinance. It was more. How it was, you know, how it was expressed in some of the order. Um, the only thing that, um. She had reco- she had changed, is she wanted to change it to, um, vacant, abandoned and unsafe properties. And, um, we thought that that was really beyond the scope of what this was, what, what we wanted to do, that this is really a vacant house. Um, registration and that, like, including unsafe. Properties, it gets us into that kind of area of, you know, what's safe and, and, you know, whether somebody's in it or not. And I think. The distinction is that a vacant house, there is nobody present on the property, so that increases the risk, um. Of fire and of things going on in the house. So that is a reason to separate out, you know, uh, mandating certain maintenance and. Upkeep of houses, of inhabited houses versus uninhabited houses. So we're just leaving it as we had it, which was registration of vacant properties. Um.
Make a comment there.
Yeah.
Uh, it's my opinion that vacant encompasses abandoned.
Yeah.
And abandoned properties, by definition, right? So, so abandoned properties would actually fall.
Right, yeah, by your definition. Um, I think. The only other major change was in the section under vacant property maintenance and security requirements. Under, um, it's on page six. Um, what was in there was we were, um. We were, uh, compliant, said that they needed to comply with maintenance standards of Montgomery County Code, and then we added. Um, kind of relevant Washington Grove article codes, but it really didn't seem to be necessary because the Montgomery County Codes are way more. Um, specific and comprehensive than what we have, so it just complicated more, so it just took out the Washington Grove articles. Um, but everything else.
I wanna include the, 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 the colors we allow and, uh.
The.
The, the colors, nature of the, of the walls.
Inside.
How, how, how high the grass is?
Yeah.
Yep.
Was there, I think that was, those were the only major.
Right.
Changes and, um, Sue Ellen's, um, changes were great, ma- makes it, you know, much more readable and much more, um. Literate. Do you think, that pretty much it, Chris?
Yes, I think so, yeah, no.
So that pretty much stands as we, um. Have, you know, previously presented it.
So did I hear a motion to amend the.
I'll second.
Amend the, uh, uh, ordinance to.
I will make that.
Read, uh, with these amendments.
And I'll second.
All in favor? When you oppose, that's unanimous. Okay.
Good.
You guys did your homework. You did a good job.
Big out, Mary, okay.
Native season source.
Sex farm one, yeah.
All right, well then that case, i- in, unless there's some other amendments, motions to be offered. We'll move on to a vote on the ordinance itself.
Hmm.
As amended. Any, any further discussion on that? If not, all in favor of approval of this ordinance?
Woo-hoo.
Unanimous. Uh, well, I, obviously, e- everyone knows here, hopefully everyone listening knows that, uh, um. Doing something about vacant properties has been a. A, a sort of a thorn i- i- in many peoples and the, the town side for years and. Owing to Mary principally, Mary's major efforts and with, with Chris's.
Kathy and, and Bob.
Um, yeah. You know, to actually, um, act to attempt to get the situation better under control. So that we, um, we can encourage, um, safe houses if they're not occupied. And maybe encourage them to become occupied at the same time, which is also one of the, I know what most people would prefer. Um. So, great, uh, anyway.
This was the easy part.
What?
Yeah.
Now, the, the enforcement.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, there, there is that.
But this is like, this is the first step, which is, which.
And this, this gives us a lot of, um, a lot of teeth, and since it's an ordinance, enforceable, um, so.
And, and, I think, I think communication wise, it's great because it's an awareness that we were all sharing this understanding of it. Before it was just like. Individual people trying to do things, but as a group, as a town, I think it'll be more smart effective as we get John to enforce this.
Yeah.
Okay, so I wanna say something about that. It does impose a administrative burden.
Yeah.
On the town as well as on.
Yeah.
Those who, who are not occupying their properties. So, um, I guess I should ask right now, I'm gonna ask Mary. For this year to get this thing started, which is always the.
Okay.
Largest hurdle.
Mm-hmm.
That, uh, we can work together to ensure that those who need to know about it, we'll get the forms together, all that stuff.
Okay.
So that we can.
And we have till July, I guess July first is the first Friday.
Right, well, well, I mean, it will be.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Great.
Okay. All right, then, uh, we will now go on to item twelve, um, um, and which is still unfinished business. This is tennis court security and use.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, I have, uh, uh, indicated, and as Georgette very helpfully.
Mm-hmm.
Helps to have some institutional memory.
Hmm.
Uh, very helpfully, um, um, remembered that we actually have procedures for. Woodward Park use and the sport of the park and sports facilities. That's the good news. The bad news is rather than it being done by resolution with procedures. It was done by ordinance. So we have, um, by ordinance, this document, which I distributed to you. And that is what will need some revision, I think. At least it should be looked at closely. In conjunction with this, in my opinion. Um, why is that my opinion? The first thing that the ordinance, uh, indicates is that the tennis courts will be restricted to town residents. That this may be the time to confirm or revise that. Prohibition or that restriction. Um, since implementing a lock system. And the administrative burden, whoever is responsible. Um. Actually addresses the, 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 the usage of the court. In conjunction with that, I know the, the hope is to create a signup system. To sign up for the courts, um, um, and if all of that could be done at the same time, that would be great. Um, so that. This distribution of access information, if the council is in favor of going forward with the locking. Um, can be done in a, in a, in a way that, you know, is, is easy, but ready to manage. Um. It will be a little more complex than the, uh, lake, although a lot less users. The lake has lots and lots of users. Courts have users, but I don't think it's in the same, same, uh.
So what is the motion that we're talking about here?
Well, we either have to have a motion to just take action about the tennis courts with respect to. Their, their operation, but we have a, did anybody look at that ordinance?
I mean, I'm looking, yeah.
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 Uh, yeah, uh.
What is the change or?
It's just, it's just the courts are for the use of Washington Grove, period.
So can you just adopt?
So, I don't understand why I would make the motion to lock, just period, to lock the courts. And, um, we already have Meredith is, well, we could discuss it, but I wouldn't, I'm, I wouldn't, I don't think this is that complicated. And, and it could always be, you know, we can always amend it or do something else, but, uh, the, the people, all the users, there's a significant amount of people who. Have heard nothing but requests for it, and they asked me to, um, you know, bring it up tonight. Linda, Meredith is. Um, even though we're not discussing it right now, Meredith is coming up with the system for communicating. She's putting her name and number everywhere for people. Um, if they need it, but, um, there's a lot of pickleball. It's gonna keep increasing. And the courts, um, they, they only have two pickleball courts. And we have the one tennis court, so it's, it's, it's gonna be a problem as far as people from outside coming in. And using it. Plus the fact that it says it's for Grove, so I don't see a problem with at least.
Yeah, I mean, by saying lock, you know, one says it's for Grove rather, so just. That would be a way to implement that.
Do we have to change anything in this ordinance so we can just start locking the court?
Yeah, and we can always, we can, you know, if, if there's a problem, we'll fix it. But Meredith, Meredith, you know, Meredith spends a lot of time, she locks the gate every night. She's at the court. She's actively engaged with, uh, you know, with that particular facility. And Linda and, um, and Meredith both very strongly have been requesting for a long time. To have that locked because of the damage that's done. That's one thing. And also, have, most communities that I know that have tennis courts have locks on them now. Anyway, it's unusual and it works.
Plus the gardens in there now.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, yeah.
So what about accessing the, um, clay courts? Cause you just walk over those.
Just go over the fence, but there'll be a, but there'll be.
At least they won't be able to throw.
Right, and those are the most important things.
But if you're wearing roller blade, you won't be able to.
No, if you have, if you have an eighty-pound dog.
Yeah.
You're not gonna get your, your, your dog. But, but I, I, I just think, like you said, I don't think, I think this is pretty much, uh, you know, if, you can find problems with this, but. The lake works, the bathrooms at the maintenance shed are locked, the tennis court, um, you know, sh- sheds locked. The town is really good at communicating combinations and things like that.
So, so I have a question. So I know they're working on that schedule and have reserved the court and all that. Once that's in place, would the courts still be locked?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause part of it is to keep people with like dogs and scooters and bikes off of the courts.
Yeah. There's a million tennis courts, I mean, a million tennis courts around us. Every school's got lots of tennis courts, and so people from outside the Grove, it's not like they need to play tennis in the Grove.
Right, and we locked it, we already locked the pickleball nets.
Yeah, and the pickle, pickleball is, you don't even see people playing tennis anymore, and we're gonna see less and less. It's all. It's pickleball and the tennis players will use the, use the clay courts. So. Yeah, yeah, you can always find reasons not to do stuff, but.
So, so the motion is we start locking the tennis court?
Yeah, it's as simple as that. We just buy, we just buy some locks and put them on.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we need to wait, cause I, I assume, and I don't know if anybody's talked to Christine, I assume setting up the website. For, you know, online scheduling is gonna be a long process, cause I think she was saying first. Or maybe you guys were saying first, she's gonna set up a residence-only section, and then within the residence-only section would be the tennis court. Sign up and maybe the, the combinations would be there, but I don't think we need to wait until that's ready to start locking.
No, just need to tell people where.
Yeah, and I, I already put out that we were considering locking the courts and be aware of that and like, here's people, if you notice a lock on the court, here are people to contact and we can. Put that out again on the, in the bulletin and on the list serve.
And we really know almost everybody who uses courts.
Yeah.
Maybe we, we kind of do, and you can put up lists, or we can, we're not gonna, we're not gonna make it secret like the lake. Like, we don't care. If somebody from outside the Grove finds out what the combination is, fine, that's not a problem, but at least. The, the people who wanna find out the combination are gonna be the type of people who will respect it.
Mm-hmm.
Plus, plus if it's locked, people are not gonna, you know, they're gonna feel uncomfortable going in there and using it, even if they do know what the combination is, so. I don't, I don't see this as, I, I think, I think that the people who spend a lot of time. With, with those courts and making this something that's usable for our town, um, this is their request, and I think that. Um, they're the ones that know better than anybody, you know, to a degree, and since it's already there. I don't, I don't see a big problem with that.
I just wanna say though, that just the idea of locking it just drives me the wrong way, even though I understand. You know, you go to a place, oh, wouldn't these tennis, oh, it sucks, I can't use it.
Okay, I've been, you know. I I I I'm, I'm unconvinced that the 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 this isn't a solution without a problem. Um, let me just ask you, what damage to the tennis courts has occurred? This year or any other year?
Apparently, the clay court, especially the clay courts.
Oh, there was a big damage to the clay courts done by summer in the parks. Yeah.
So that won't be solved.
So that won't be solved by the. Um, kids were in there digging like it was a sandbox. Yeah, and apparently the staff didn't realize that that was a problem, so I've now had to tell them. Don't let the kids in the clay court, clay court is off limits, but yeah.
The court, the court is used as a playpen a lot of times for people, though, because they can go in there with their kids. And they close the gate, and dogs, I don't see dogs too often, but I do see a lot of young children in there. And they, they'll be jumping on the nets, there'll be, you know, people will be using it for, as a soccer, sometimes they use it as a soccer.
I have seen somebody in there with their kid on a scooter and their dog running around, but I don't know what damage they're doing to it.
Yeah, that. The real point is, you, is it, i- is this proposal simply because a rule is a rule and people? There are people violating it, or is there a more practical reason? That the violating, violating is causing damage, preventing tennis players from using the court. The garden is suffering or whatever, and. As far as I know, none of those things are the case. In other words, it's a solution without a problem.
Well, I'm just saying that the people who maintain the, use the courts, okay, this is their, this is their request. You know, we listen to the people and this is the people.
So Linda has told me multiple times, like when, when there are. Wheels and dogs, it messes up the court, and I don't know anything other than that, but he's the expert and not me. So she could probably speak to it more, and I don't know if she is like saying there has been damage. Or it's just, I guess, I, I, to your point, I don't know if there has been damage or there's just concern about there being damage, and that needs the. You know.
Mer- Meredith has raised her hand. I, and I know we don't.
No, no, no.
Well, yeah, and just the, the other thing though is that, just plan for the future. The increase in pickleball is, is. Pretty astronomical as far as people playing it. There aren't a lot of, there's, there's lots and lots of tennis courts. There aren't a lot of pickleball.
Those are locked already.
Not right, but but people don't know that, and the thing is that the 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 nets are out, people are gonna be. Um, you know, even like within the Grove, it's maybe for the scheduling, it's gonna get more and more, it's only two courts. And there's, it's already at capacity on Saturday morning, and now we have our kids. We're planning for the future.
I do know also, maybe this is why Meredith raised her hand. Um, I do know she had an incident where there were some kids skateboarding in the tennis court. And she went to tell them that that wasn't allowed, and I think there was.
John, I called John. John, John told me, instead of him coming down and doing his job and enforcing it, those, it was like twelve, twelve teenagers and me. And and I luckily backed out, no, and and his response was, I'll call the police. But that's just one example, but that happened to me, I'm sitting here, and because I saw all these kids skate and skateboarding. The the surface, that's why when you play tennis, you are supposed to wear tennis shoes, not running shoes, because it ruins the surface of the court. And I'm not even arguing, I don't even use that court, I'm not arguing from that point. I'm just arguing that. My constituency is requesting that we do this. It's, it's something that. The ordinance says it's for the town, I see no reason, it's, it's, I mean, unless, unless Jean and I say that our budget can't afford the. Ten dollars for the locks, but.
May I propose that we put this also off to the next month? And in the meantime, if people have reports of damage, actual damage that was done to the court. You, can we see a record of that? Cause right now, like, we don't know what it is, when it happened, how often. And I think that would be, to me, that would be helpful to me.
I think that's unfair, I I think that's unfair, but I have no problem with it because nobody's gonna be using the tennis courts until. Like the clay, you know, at at menorah weekend is when the clay courts open, and that's when it becomes, um, I know that they're playing some pickleball now, but pretty much. You know, so it's not gonna make a big difference within the month.
But but if people have experienced this problem like as an ongoing thing, then they would be able to say, oh, last year it was around July. You know, they don't have to have every single detail there, but just to give us an idea.
Well, and like, have we had to redo the surface, court surface, like if. Okay, so like, so is it, cause I guess I see Barbara's point of like. Has there been actual damage from this, or is it just concern that there will be damage, and if there's been actual damage? What and like, cause I can see if, if it's like me, meaning that we're having to resurface the court more often, then that's, that is a concern. But maybe we need to have more information.
It's an attractive nuisance. I think that's what I would call it, just like the lake is.
Okay.
And 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 I don't think people should not, if if we, if if it's, there's a sign out there that says Grove only. And I see no problem, just like every other, every other community does this. I don't know why, you know, we're being, it's, there's no reason why anybody. I don't think it has anything to do with DEI or being unwelcoming or anything else. It's just a Grove asset for the residents. And um, you know, putting a lock on it, to me, is what, you know, we're not reinventing the wheel here. It's not like we're putting a fence around the Grove, they have the playground, they have all that, everything there.
Well, I move that we postpone this for a month, and the people who have information about damage that was done. Come forward and we consider it next month and take the vote next month.
Or, and also people who would, who are requesting this, I mean, they may. I mean, not just necessarily specific incidents, but you know, why they.
Yeah, 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 more detail, more detail on why they're requesting, so that we understand that.
Needs a second.
So what, what about, sorry, what about Peter's uh motion to lock the courts? Where did that go?
Yeah, we're, I'm amending.
That, that, that motion, it has been introduced now in. Another motion is being made to postpone action until the May meeting. To solicit um opinions on blocking the court and. Um, any, any um reports, you know, details about damage or other or just.
Like in writing, so that we can.
In writing would be useful.
Now, before, well, before we do that. Well, all right, before we do that, um, we, I have the right to ask Meredith. If she wants to report on damage. I use my help line.
We now have a motion to postpone on the table.
I'm, I'm, I'll listen to it.
It was already mentioned and it was, she was dis, she was discarded without, well, but it was, it was said that she can't speak. And she can't speak.
I'm not, nothing against you, Meredith, this has nothing to do with you. It has to do with the order of handling.
It's the mayor who calls on people to speak.
Is that right?
That's perfectly legit. You, you know, Meredith would like to speak. Um, I, I'm gonna do this one because the motion has been to postpone for the express purpose of hearing from people. About this. By May.
So why don't we just, why don't we just then? It's not gonna make a difference, what it says now or then, so.
That's, that's my point. Not that we don't wanna hear what you have to say, we do.
I don't think it's anything we haven't already heard, okay.
Well, you have heard, I'm sure some people here have not heard. All right, so is anybody else wanna speak to the post, motion to postpone, which is seconded by Eva? If not, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of postponing as described? Opposed? You didn't speak, okay. Rob is opposed.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I don't see why we would postpone. The, the ordinances say that the uh, these kind of recreational facilities are for the exclusive use in the town. And putting a lock that where the combination is only made available to. Town residents is consistent with what our ordinance say and the the sentiments. So apparently, people who use the tennis courts, I'm not one of those people, so I'm not sure that we need to postpone things, but. All right, the vote, the vote carried.
I saw four, was it five, was it, did you vote?
I'm, I'm just gonna stand because I, I, I understand both sides.
So it was uh, but four in favor, one opposed and one abstention, we postpone till next meeting. Okay.
I, I have a point of information. Um, this came up last time. The. Aren't the ordinances supposed to be on the website? Cause this ordinance that you showed us isn't listed under the.
I, I, I think the supposed to be? No. Should they be? Yes.
Well, I'm not sure what the distinction you're trying. There, there, the webpage called ordinances that lists a bunch of ordinances, that's not one of them, that's listed on the website.
Right, and I.
I'm not saying it's not enacted, I'm just saying it, it seems like it should be.
So we have a council.
Oh, it's on there now.
I, I didn't, I wasn't gonna check, but I know Christine specifically says ordinances before whenever.
It's there, but you see there's a jump from two thousand sixteen to two thousand eighteen. She hasn't put the older ones on there, but she clearly put this one on there.
She has no response, if she's requested the ordinances, but that's not a, not a trivial. Uh, it's not a trivial thing for her to put it on or to provide them. The council handbook that you guys all have access to online. For example, has a, Charlie Charleston put together something he calls a red book or a red something. It has. All of the, or virtually all of the ordinances and resolutions through two thousand thirteen, I believe. This is when he did it. And they're all just links to PDF versions or scan, you know, scans of them. Earlier, but they're not on the website. You're absolutely right, because somebody has to create a usable. You know, has to dump them in a usable way, something to improve the website with, but. What can I say? You're right. Well, it wasn't there up until this week, probably. Okay, um, then we have, we have, uh, moving on to the new business. Um, we have had, uh, the planning commission. Has um sent to the council a request to uh modify um our um. Zoning ordinance, I believe it is. No, it's not a zoning ordinance, the uh, an ordinance involving fence permits. And in a moment, I will. Uh, put that up here.
Can I speak to that while you're doing?
You may, Chris Peters.
Yeah, so on, at the planning commission, it's kind of like an oversight. In the ordinance, it says that when you apply for a fence permit. You have to apply also to the, to Washington Grove and Montgomery County. Which is obviously not something that anybody's ever really done. And and we, uh, so we're requesting just to take off the ordinance, the fact that you have to go to Montgomery County. And it's confusing because some residents do, like, we get calls all the time from people, their contractors go, oh, you know. Should we, we'll go to the county, get a permit, which is obviously probably more expensive and everything too, and so that's not necessary. So. We'd like to just change that, to streamline the process.
A second.
Okay, the ordinance uh two thousand twenty-five, whatever it is, dash O three. Um, has been introduced and discussion is open. I've highlighted the four words. Basically, that are being added to the set of exemptions from Montgomery County permits.
The same thing about a lock being done on that fence?
Yep, you have to lock your fence. All right, do we have any discussion? I, 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 I have a. I think this is kind of a no brainer. Um, nobody has ever been concerned in the past about a Montgomery County permit, so. Why should it be implied that you need one? Okay, I guess there's no reason not to do this. We handle ordinances by advertising them in our, the required. It will be in the bulletin, so that's fine. And is there any discussion?
Well, I, I have, eh, just a legal question. Um, i- if Montgomery County. Requires permits for fences, are we, do we have the authority as a municipality to say that our residents are? Not subject to that requirement?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they, they, they have requirement, they do have requirements for fence permits.
Right.
I believe. Um, we have our own and, you know, it's, it's, it has to be the height, it's all sorts of. We have all sorts of specifications regarding fences. It's just that, you know, so in order to get a fence. You have to get a fence permit here in Washington Grove that meets our requirements, not Montgomery County's.
Ri- ri- right, my, my question is simply, does a municipality like Washington Grove? Have the legal right to say its residents don't need to comply with. Montgomery County's fence permit regulations. That, that's what this ordinance is saying, right?
So. A- as the, the way, the way that the town um incorporates. Various sections of the county's code into our ordinances. For example, all of this, the building, uh, uh, structural requirements, the electric, and all, all of that is incorporated. Health, health requirements, a raft of sections we incorporate. But they leave out another larger raft of parts, parts of the code. Uh, from, from our requirements, so we are exempted from all of those. Um, you're, you're absolutely right, some things the county specifies. Requires the municipalities to do. For example, I, I believe the gas powered. Um, when, um. Leaf blowers is what? Municipalities are not allowed to exempt themselves from that. Um, and and a lot of other, there's a whole pile. Yeah, so I, 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 we can look and see whether we've incorporated the portion of the code. That includes fence permits, cause they do have a fence permit. But i- i- if it does, that, we have an oversight, we should have exempted ourselves from that section.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand the rationale for this, yeah, a- as long as legally we can exempt ourselves from.
Yes, you know, this was almost a record.
This is what?
It was almost a record how quickly we were gonna pass.
But no more.
But it was a good, good question.
All right, actually, I, I'm gonna tell, now that you've brought it up, I'm gonna take a look and what, what, whether we incorporate that section. In our um ordinances and, and to what extent. Whether we've exempted ourselves from various small parts of, of certain things. All right. Anybody else for the comment? All in favor of ordinance twenty-five O three? All right, that's unanimous. It's passed. Great.
John, is there, um, so is, can we, like, um, put these in the parking lot? So that, so like, it's a lot to pass, you know, to do this publicly and all that stuff, to prove it. Cause there's other things, other ordinance changes that the PC probably wants to make, and so would it make sense to just kind of put it in the parking lot? And then collect them, do you get like a certain number, or is that not worth doing?
You've gone to all the trouble to draw this up. As far as I know, we've handled ordinance. Well, as long as we, it isn't uh, an, an minute, we're using this a lot today, administrative burden to uh, to um. Fulfill the requirement of our charter to pass it, we could just let this go. I had started to say, well, gee, can't we wait and combine this with the um, well, we, we, it is combined already with the vacant property.
Oh, it is.
We have two ordinances.
Because we wanted to clean up, we wanted to clean up, we have a lot of things like that, and.
Right.
But, but.
You can do that.
This is like, whether we pass this now or in ten years, it's not gonna make any difference to anybody. But I'm just trying to lighten, lighten the administrative.
Well, I certainly would lighten the council's burden if you've got them all together. Well, I certainly would lighten the council's burden if you've got them all together.
Yeah, yeah.
You know. Okay, uh, all right, we're on to the next item of new business, which is, um, resolution twenty-two-five O five, a charter amendment requiring the town council to schedule town election hours.
Right, I move to introduce that.
Okay.
And I mean, if you read it and if, you know, we've talked about this in the meeting, that right now we're kind of stuck. We can only vote at a certain time. That means the town meeting can only be at a certain time. And this just gives us a little bit more flexibility. Uh, so the charter currently says that polls have to be open from four to seven. Uh, but this change would say for a period, instead of saying that, for a period of three or more hours on election day, as scheduled and made public by the council, at least twenty-one days in advance. So it's just, everybody can still vote, still gonna be at least three hours, but just gives us a little more flexibility in planning the day.
Yep. Looks great.
Right, and the, and the, and the main reason is to be able, really, is to be able to schedule the annual town meeting after the election and, and perhaps in the afternoon, if the council. Right now, we can schedule the town meeting whenever we want on the second Saturday of May, but nobody wants to do it before the election.
Right.
Okay, so any discussion of this?
Okay, I'm voting.
You, you don't want this to be too short.
Oh, I think, I think, yeah, I think, I think this is an easy one.
Okay, all in favor of this, uh, ordinance? Uh, that passes unanimously. Okay, as you know, there is a more stringent requirement for this one. It does require advertising for four consecutive weeks and et cetera, et cetera. I kind of ran through it the last time. But we will follow that procedure, uh, I hope. And, uh, and, 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 you know, we have to allow opportunity for there to be an objection, that sort of thing. Okay. Very good. That, uh, stop that. Okay, we've reached the town council reports um, of note, um, for which I have a few. These town council reports are very extensive this, um, month. Thank you all for writing those out. But no thanks to Chris, who I think just put in their minutes, which was, went on ad nauseam. The lighting, the lighting company minutes.
Well, there's a requirement. So I couldn't get that in my report.
So, um, anyway, uh, I had to say something. So, so Kathy even, she, she says, okay, here's all the council reports. Um, yeah, uh, do they have to be that long? And I said, I was thinking, well, you know, there's no harm in it being long. And then I realized if you wanna make them readable, but of course Christine claims nobody ever reads them, thus, I hope.
Well, there's a lot of implication.
Uh, well, yes, but that's, yeah, but, but it's formatting. I mean, the format is all over the, but it's unbelievable, the different format. I always go through it. I don't know if you, I understand. I go through it and make it uniform. And this time it did take me quite a while. Okay, that said, I still think it's better to have that information than not, certainly for austerity and actually for keeping up with what's going on, because nobody can keep up with what's going on, uh, except Peter.
I remember.
Okay, so of note, of note, first thing is, um, from the diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging ad hoc committee. This is from Barbara, who's on the ad hoc committee. Uh, the, this is a group of, uh, of, of town, uh, uh, you know, leaders who had, uh, attended the, the workshops. And we, uh, everyone there agreed that we, we, we hadn't reached any stunning set of, of things we needed to do, um, to solve what everyone believes are, are goals in this area. So the, the four, the three or four of them agreed to work up where we should go after this year's session. So from that, they provided a nice, a nice report, which is very.
Eva wrote it.
Eva wrote a nice report. Uh, it's very, very, um, informative, um. But I did wanna, uh, just, just point out that that's, uh, that was done and I hope, you know, more people will read it.
I do have a question about that, because I know one of the things we suggested was having some people from Leadership Montgomery do a very brief presentation at the annual meeting. So is that something that?
I've reached out to them.
Okay, that was my question.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I have reached out to them.
Okay.
Um, I, I did feel that asking someone to come for fifteen minutes Saturday night at eight thirty or whatever.
Yeah.
Was a big ass.
Something.
That's what I, I gave them the option, which I'm sure they will grab immediately to record.
People will go.
To record.
One of them will go to that.
I, they're crazy.
Good marketing for them.
They have kids.
I think of recording.
I wasn't reading.
Yeah.
No, it's.
That's, that's.
Chris has something going on.
Skylight, you know. No, I think I hear somebody roller skating on. Uh, yes.
Okay, that was my only question.
Oh, okay.
Well, well, soon. All right, um, with respect to maintenance, we already, uh, in connection with the kudos to Steve, the comprehensive sign project is described through well by Peter, including listing all of the current list of signs, which is a one page long um, of, of what, what's been, what's been addressed or will be addressed. Um, and in sustainability, this is nothing everybody shouldn't have ex- expected, although it may not be on your radar. The, um, the, um, energy conversion incentive program that we have going, um, uh, was only approved through the second pilot year, is this year. And we put twenty thousand into the budget for the coming year, but we have to renew it. Um, that renewal has been worked on by the sustainability committee. And they have proposed some changes to the operational aspects, which are part of the approval that we've been, we've given. And that, that, uh, that, um, I've, I've convinced, I persuaded them that we don't need to deal with it until May or even June. Um, we have the money, we just need to approve the details. Um, one of the important parts of that everybody should know is they propose to authorize it through twenty thirty. It wouldn't come back every year. Still requires an appropriation, I mean, a, a budget. If you don't have a budget, can't do the program, but it wouldn't mean reviewing it every year. Okay. Um, summer in the parks, you already heard, increased presentations and additional counselor. And, uh, for me, and from also from Ava, there's, and was mentioned, the, um, community bulletin board kiosk.
Yeah, what's up the proposal?
Yeah. Has been, uh, is being worked on. And lastly, um, as far as events go, the rec committee apparently, um, is, um, is, is, is planning to reduce the events at Music Weekend in favor of having those or something equivalent associated with Circle Fest, where they're about three weeks apart, usually. The, the music weekend usually falls on Father's Day in June and Circle Fest is May twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth. So, um, that's it. Um, so if anyone has anything else they feel they wanna bring specifically, otherwise, uh, I, I, yeah, but I picked ten o'clock.
I know.
Okay.
One, one more question, I guess, and it's to the folks that are on there, is to how well the speakers.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I would like anybody to please let us know any improvements that we can make. We, we, and, and, and if, if it's, couldn't we all face the camera? Configuration of this room just doesn't make that.
What are you gonna be for? I'm gonna sit over there.
We could all sit like this and put the camera over there. Um, we've chosen to start out by doing it this way. So I, I know you, I know you're seeing the better part of Peter's head.
Yeah.
Uh, and probably mine as well, uh, a lot of the time. But, but do to do, do give us any, uh, any advice, please. Um, not right now. But, but privately, just, just let us know. Um, okay, on that note, um, the next meetings, well, next meeting is the annual town meeting on May tenth, uh, at eight. It's also going to be a hybrid meeting, um, and hopefully it's going to work, um, work, uh, work well. We're not gonna send it, uh, uh, Melissa, I am all this here from Montgomery Municipal Cable. She's been overseeing our second trial with this and it did, we did fumble around getting it started. Hopefully all's well, the, well. Um, but we'll be doing it in the hall and they have agreed to manage the technical aspects. I will not be managing. So, um, hopefully that will be good.
So this is great, having, uh, meeting, I think, in person. The only drawback is that John can't, I wonder if you can hide your wine in there.
Well, I, I thought of bringing wine today, actually, offering it to everybody.
Yeah.
Uh, and if we keep this up, I may well do that.
All right.
Um, okay, so, um, any, uh, hearing, no objections to adjournment?
No.
Then we will call this.
Great, great job. Thanks, guys. I'm not done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
I knew it was gonna rain tonight, but I didn't think it was gonna rain.
I'll find an excuse not to be there tomorrow.
Yeah, have you not tried the slowest?
No, I have to do it. I, they like, they like it. Yeah, I always talk about you all the time, about, about, I was just trying, I was trying to copy you.
Copy what I'm doing?
Bye.